Don't have a three. Technically, it's not a meeting. Do you have a quorum? You don't have a meeting. We can talk informally with each other. Without having a meeting.
Why don't you wait, wait, give him about three or four minutes to see if he shows up.
You want to make sure, otherwise we're like...
You haven't been... Where is Hollis?
That's true.
I'm here. You got my text, huh? You got my text saying that I'm here.
Courtney got his first full scholarship. Four rounds of mercy.
We can't, we can't count, count this one. Unfortunately. That's okay. Do you know where Cora is?
Was that nerve for anybody? Sounds like a sword.
Hello ma'am, I didn't hear that.
Your word is Mr. Pro.
What'd she say about...
She doesn't know.
These ways of... These ways of... Let's just start, start. We enjoy giving games.
Yo, we was...
Be, be...
Mary certain baby, Mary the city boy.
Time to see her, that's great, yo.
Well, you know what?
It's, it's, uh, Laura. And I told, this is your daughter. Last, I said, you know, I didn't know Jill and Greg. She said, we... We just been cracking up.
You get any response?
At Laura's still... I hear whatever. I said, I've been playing, I've been getting years.
No, but you can't call me because... I mean, I guess we can talk about it, but you can't call me.
We can talk, look yourself.
I think we're not going to...
Didn't you, as I'm saying, why can't I have a presentation? Everything was closed session.
Hey. Okay. Truman Rodney and Doug.
Well, I think we're just gonna go ahead and talk about some of the stuff and we'll just not...
We did, you brought, you have any ideas?
And we can't call any order, we'll go ahead and just talk.
All right, then we're gonna just go ahead, gather, listen. Without an official meeting at this point in time. First item is to discuss GDOT, Bridge Special Report on Poplar Street Bridge, Project Consultant Roundups, and Preparagon will brief us. Welcome, sir.
Thanks. Good morning. Um, as you know, the GDOT inspected the bridge back a few months ago on Poplar Street, right where Airweather intersects with Poplar. And found some significant issues in the piles. So they immediately, uh, asked us to load limit that bridge to five tons. So that was done, uh, very quickly. Five tons theoretically is, uh, no real dual action traffic. So technically, it's, it's, uh, it's any bigger vehicles. Some, some big trucks, some big pickup trucks are approaching five tons. So, uh, I think, I think the bottom line is just gotta, that, that's been load limited, it's been rated. Somebody drives on it, it's, they've, they've not honored the signage, but long-term, we need to look at repairing those piles. Those piles have deteriorated over time. We've got some pictures that, um, that we could show.
Brian, is it on? I think you need to turn it on. Did you turn it on? I mean, I did turn it on.
Oh, okay.
Did I just push the button to move it? Exactly, what am I pointing at? Where am I pointing?
Look, there's range.
There it goes, okay. All right. Just to give you a little background on bridges, the, uh, superstructure is comprised of the piles that you see, the vertical components, the foundations under the piles, and then the decking that is actually the bridge. So that's, that's what we're dealing with. The, this is a report, main thing I want to draw your attention to in this report is the substructure. They rate these things from zero, from one to 10, and they've rated this substructure before, which is poor condition. It's the reason that we had to load limit the structure. They're, they're inspected every two years. So GDOT does that, and it's on the National Bridge inventory, so it has to be updated. So right now, currently, we have a substandard bridge in our system.
Brian, what is the enforcement mechanism, though? Is there one?
I, I would, no, there's really, the GDOT doesn't, doesn't come back and enforce anything. They've asked that we load limit it, which we did.
Scales out there weigh every vehicle before it goes across.
No, and, and I think it's strictly a, uh, I don't know if it's a liability issue, I don't know what it is, but once you rate that, bridge...
If we know there's a problem, we designated it by signage, and there is a collapse, I think we've got a problem. That's what worries me.
That's, that's my concern, even though you rate it and you designate it as limited, people don't honor it. They're not gonna honor that, they're not gonna find that sign, they're not gonna pay attention. So there could potentially be a problem. Is there gonna be a problem today? I don't think so, but if we don't get this repaired, it could turn into a major problem because those piles are deteriorating with the erosion that's happening. That, that's, that is a picture of that pile. You can see the bottom part where it's, it's completely eroding out, so it's, the strength of that pile is very limited now. And this is a picture, there's a pipe that comes in off the, um, I guess it's the west side of the abutment. And it, you can see where it's, uh, I can't point. See that, see that right there? That's all washed out. That pipe is right there, that's coming into the abutment. Used to be a flume that went all the way to the ground. And that has broken off, washed out, and in turn has caused the, the bottom of these piles to corrode. So all these piles now are exposed to rain, water, stormwater, and they're, they're corroding out. So there's, there's two things that need to be done, this, this, uh, this needs to be repaired, this water needs to be gotten off of this area. So I've talked to Bryce about it, and the city's gonna reroute the storm drain line that's above ground there and move it on down below the bridge so that we don't have this water flowing right down into the abutment. This is a picture of the opposite side of the bridge, you can see that it's eroding, this erosion is occurring here on this side, and it's coming in from the deck, uh, the joints in the deck, which is up at the street. So we're gonna have to repair, we're gonna have to seal those joints as a part of this project to stop this water from coming through the deck and, um, and causing erosion into the side here. There's another picture of a pile. You see that it's, it's corroded in the back and then it's corroding in the front. So it's, uh, it's more prevalent than not in all these piles. There's another picture of the drainage problems, it's just coming down here and, and wobbling this sidewalk out. How, how we repair this? They, they come in and they excavate below ground, and then they create some steel, they weld steel below grade and above grade and, and create a, uh, more whole joint in here. And then, as you can see, it's, it's, it's a, it's like an H-pile that's got two strips that are welded on each side of it. So that's the, uh, mechanical repair that. Uh, this is a picture of, of pile that, um, could constantly is underwater, it's not, not our picture, but here's a picture of the, of a typical repair. They take a piece of steel, weld it back onto the steel plate, steel pile that's already there. So that's, that's a remedy we're proposing to do. So, and then it would be repainted with, a pile would be repainted. So that's kind of the finished product that you see. So we've, uh, we've looked at this, we, we think that, that honestly, time is of the essence because now you've been notified that there's a problem and we need to, we need to get the design done so that we can get it under contract. We'll have to coordinate with Norfolk Southern. And, um, so that may be some time to get their permitting approved, but we're, we've been, we've been told of a problem, we have a solution for it, but our recommendation is that we move forward getting a design and get it, uh, we're gonna have a cost assessment we'll bring back to you after the design, so you'll know what it's gonna cost before we bid it. And that way you can, um, see where it fits in your budget. Any questions?
I think we originally, one of our SPLOSTs had, um, 250,000 per bridge at one time.
No, we didn't. That's not in any document that I have seen. So this, this is not budgeted. And we did put 3.5 million in the T-SPOSS, um, projects as a tier-two project for bridges in Culverston, did not specify what those were, um, because we don't know which ones are the worst. Unfortunately, this has been a problem that for some reason the, um, GDOT was sending to the county. Though this is not a new thing, it's just new to us because it wasn't sent to us, even though it's our bridge. So we will have to, and one of the things that Maurice and I are doing, um, for our January goals workshop is going through all of the excess SPLOSS money, the transportation projects from 2016, as well as the T-SPOSS projects and the ARPA funding to figure out how we're gonna pay for this because it's really not, it's not a question as to if, it's about how. Um, so the first thing is this task order form is on the agenda tonight to go ahead and approve. We, we know that there's money in one of those things, so we did not, by neutral considerations, poke where it's coming from. We're gonna have to work with Angela on that after the fact, unfortunately, it may be a quarterly budget and then it clean up. Um, but we do know we have money in those couple different, um, programs that we can use. We just don't know exactly which ones are the best.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Yes, sir.
Moving into item two, discuss revised City Griffin downtown urban redevelopment plan, director of planning, development, check, check, which will address. Welcome, sir.
Morning. All right, so y'all remember, uh, we started basically about a year ago, uh, the revision to the, uh, downtown Griffin urban redevelopment plan? And so, uh, today and this evening or before y'all, uh, we're gonna go kind of do highlights of the plan, uh, this morning. We'll kind of do the same thing this evening and then hopefully adopt, uh, tonight. Uh, just to refresh your memory, uh, the purpose of the plan is to support the City Griffin and its partners to revitalize the downtown area and stimulate sustainable economic growth. Uh, the plan specifically lays out the current conditions showing the need for an urban redevelopment plan, concepts that can be implemented as part of future redevelopment efforts, and an implementation plan that includes tools and action steps. So that's kind of the summary of what the plan is in general. Uh, if y'all remember, uh, probably about six, eight months ago, uh, we readopted the 2008 plan in an effort, uh, to help with our, our project, uh, for a tax credit project. Uh, so this is actually gonna serve as the update to that, uh, 2008 plan. Uh, to get a little bit of context, again, the boundaries for this plan, uh, are not changing from the 2008 plan. Uh, the boundaries are still the same, it's roughly, uh, 10th Street to the west, uh, 3rd Street to the east, and, uh, Poplar to the south, and then it kind of stair steps a little bit, as you can kind of see there on that boundaries map, uh, up to Chapel. Uh, so, uh, the, the, the boundaries are essentially staying the same. So how did we get here? Uh, like I said, uh, we did kickoff meeting, uh, in November, uh, last year. Uh, and we had about 28 folks in attendance, it was really well attended. Uh, and after that, uh, we established an advisory committee, uh, with about 10 participants. And it was comprised of some elected officials, business owners, we had a chamber of congress representative and some schools, uh, system representative and, and concerned citizens. We also did an online survey, uh, that was sent out, we had roughly about 200 respondents on that, so there was actually a good response to that, which helped kind of formulate, uh, some of the, uh, action items that we got in this plan. Uh, the advisory committee met four times throughout the planning process, and two of those meetings, we actually did, uh, walkabouts kind of throughout the city, walk one side of the city on, uh, one meeting, uh, and then, uh, follow-up where we walked the other side. And, uh, everybody kind of pointed out and noted various different things of concern or what they liked and, and that nature. So that's essentially how we, uh, made it through, uh, the process to where we are now with, uh, final document. So the way the document is broken down, you actually have an introduction, uh, then there's an assessment of need. Uh, within that assessment of need, uh, we go through, uh, various different items like population, median income, uh, household poverty rates and, uh, housing profile data, uh, and kind of compile a lot of that information. Uh, you're using, uh, census data and kind of gives you a snapshot time for where you are in the study area. Uh, from there, we also go on to look at, um, existing, uh, conditions, both negative and positive. Uh, some of these conditions that we looked at, uh, from a negative standpoint, uh, that you're wanting to address were vacant spaces and structures, uh, vacant lots and underutilized parcels, uh, and aging public infrastructure, a lack of green space, parks and community gathering space, and then high, uh, volume traffic and connectivity barriers. Some of the positives that were noted, uh, in the plan, uh, were street skates, i.e. the, the recent LCI, uh, was completed, so the beautification, enhancement of parking, uh, and pedestrian facilities, and then obviously the road diet that, that took place. There was also the restoration of historic City Hall, uh, and the reconstruction of Sixth Street Bridge. Uh, all of these things were also, uh, action items that were part of the 2008 plan that were accomplished. So, uh, that's, uh, that was some good work that was done by everybody here. So the next thing that you have, uh, you kind of get into the plan, our redevelopment concepts, and so what I've done here, uh, kind of hit some highlights, again, trying to, so that way you don't, you don't go through the, the document page by page, uh, give you, uh, kind of an idea of what's going on. So, uh, you know, we talked about residential mixed-use infill, so you have kind of on this picture to the left, uh, that's an example, uh, of an infill concept in a downtown in Warren, Michigan. Um, and then the two shots there, uh, to the right are downtown images for Woodstock, uh, Georgia. After that, uh, we talked about adaptive reuse of structures and some, uh, examples here. So obviously, this is, uh, the location, uh, to your left, the underutilized site there on Broadway, kind of on West Broadway, here north of the railroad tracks, uh, and then some, uh, potential conceptual ideas of kind of how a site like that can be redone. Uh, these are two images here, uh, the one there on the right and on the top is a distillery in Toronto, Canada. Uh, and then the, uh, one below that is a brewery, uh, that's in Greensboro, Georgia. It was kind of neat because they were, especially the one there on top, uh, really kind of resembled a little bit of, kind of like the location that we have here in Griffin. So it kind of shows you conceptually, you know, uh, some possibilities. Next, uh, again, some additional adaptive reuse of structures. So on the left, uh, you have two images here of, uh, gas stations, uh, older gas stations that are in Griffin. Uh, one on North Hill Street, you know, across from, uh, PD. Uh, then obviously you have the one there that's on Taylor Street, uh, kind of out, uh, east of town. And then to the right of those are, are some examples of where old gas stations have, uh, been rehabilitated and, and new uses have come gone into those. Uh, one to the, uh, top there on the right is a location in Asheville, North Carolina. Uh, and then the one up below that is, I believe, a coffee shop in College Park. So some pretty neat examples of, uh, what you can do to, uh, adapt and reuse existing locations. One of the other things we talked about, again, this is one of the negatives, uh, if you mentioned, we kind of talked about, uh, previously in the existing conditions, uh, some high-traffic volume and connectivity barriers. Uh, so obviously, uh, Highway 16 or West, or, or Taylor Street rather, uh, is, is essentially a connectivity barrier. So it's, um, if your pedestrian traffic flow, it's a little dicey wanting to kind of cross that street. So we got to figure out ways, uh, to try to connect that, make that a little bit safer. Uh, one of the, uh, options that was presented was essentially, uh, providing for, uh, conceptually a landscape meeting, so you kind of provide a little bit of a, a safe spot, kind of get through that, and then obviously too, you know, with, uh, some landscaping, you know, and it, it kind of helps slow traffic down a little bit, you do that feeling as, like, the street gets tighter, you just kind of think that we want to slow down, uh, as you kind of move through there. So it makes a little bit more of a pedestrian safe kind of zone. Sure, GDOT would love to fund that. Uh, the other things we talked about were, uh, some public infrastructure examples. So obviously, uh, we've talked a little bit here in the past about alleyway activate, activation. Uh, so obviously, the, the shot there to the left is, uh, State Street Alley. Uh, and then here's an example, uh, to the right of one that's in, uh, Canada, South Carolina. Uh, just simply, uh, they, you know, they put up, you know, some lighting, uh, various different art type, uh, installations, and you start to kind of activate these spaces. Uh, so, and this is something I know that we're already internally talking about and, and actively working to do. Here's another example of public infrastructure, so, uh, parklets. I don't know how many of y'all are familiar with parklets, kind of a, a new thing that's going on. Uh, but the shot here to the, uh, left is obviously, uh, the stretch there on West Broad, kind of near the Welcome Center. Uh, and then if you look at these images to the right, uh, this is one that's in, uh, a parklet that's in Dallas, Texas, and one that's in San Francisco, and it essentially just takes those spaces where you would have that parallel parking and kind of extends out, you create barriers, uh, and, and kind of, uh, and almost create them, you know, it's like creative art installations to a degree, you provide additional outdoor seating. A couple summers ago, my family, we were up in Boston, it kind of went into like, uh, the Italian industry in Boston, and these were everywhere, and, and they were just packed. It was just, it created like, uh, like additional outdoor dining and seating areas, uh, and, and it was, uh, really kind of a cool thing. So this is something that, uh, was an idea that we wanted to present. So, uh, all that being said, uh, kind of going through the redevelopment conceptual slides, uh, the next thing, uh, that you get into would be the actual, uh, implementation of the plan. Um, so you implement the plan through, you establish, uh, seven goals, uh, for the different types of areas that you want to work on. Um, and then kind of like a, a broad definition of this is, uh, that the City Griffin will implement this redevelopment plan by promoting the goal set forth, encouraging the implementation of concepts presented, and utilizing the redevelopment tools most appropriate to achieve future projects and desired outcomes. And so within that, we've kind of noted these kind of main areas, uh, infill development, public space and parks, connectivity and access, preservation and design, uh, business development, wayfinding and signage are kind of some of the areas that we want to focus on. This slide here is an example for the infill development, uh, where you have your goal. Uh, so like, as an example here, the, the goal is to maximize land use potential, uh, increase residential and mixed-use development by promoting infill and vacant and underutilized, uh, land, uh, within downtown Griffin. So you, you provide a strategy, then the partners that would, uh, be a part of implementing this goal. And so we have those throughout for each one of the items that, uh, that I mentioned previously, and that's within the plan. As I mentioned, uh, in 2008, uh, the redevelopment plan listed approximately 27 projects and focus areas. And you have what's called a redevelopment action plan, uh, or in a comprehensive plan, that's also referred to as your community work program, uh, or CWP. That's in effect your report card, so, uh, are you actually doing the projects that you, you say you were gonna do in the plan? You know, and, and how are you kind of grading yourself on those? So, uh, out of the 2008 plan, uh, we reviewed those, uh, in this current document. We carried some over, uh, that we thought were still viable. Others, uh, we deleted out because after 10, 12 years, they, they no longer made sense. Things had kind of changed in the city. Uh, and then as I mentioned previously, we had, uh, four of those projects, uh, that were listed, were completed, being the, uh, historic City Hall, uh, Sixth Street Bridge, Hill Street improvements, and the road diet, uh, and then obviously the Solomon Street improvements, uh, here, the, the LCI. And finally, this here is, uh, the redevelopment plan, uh, the, uh, the action items, uh, that, that I mentioned. So again, that's broken down by focus area and then kind of some sprout, project specificity, uh, and, and then it kind of... And then it kind of indicates, so whether it's a short term or long term kind of goal. And so that kind of gives an idea of projects where to start with and then projects that we can kind of push out a little bit on the horizon and as we kind of knock off the little hanging fruit and then we kind of move on. And that's, yeah, it's pretty much it. That's again, trying to take, almost 100-page document, try to give you guys highlights on it, so be more happy to answer any questions.
We're ready on this tonight.
Yes, well, actually, we'll kind of roll through this again tonight in public hearing, and then it's on the agenda for adoption.
Any questions? Seeing those little alcoves, I think they're doing that in Dublin downtown.
Gotcha. Little parklets.
New words we learned.
That's right.
Excellent.
Thank you.
We'll see you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item three is to discuss the regulations approved, personal care homes, and unified development code. Development Director Chad Jeffries and Staff Attorney Kelsey Carden will address. Welcome.
Hello. Good morning. So as you all probably recall, we met in August of 2022, following a string of complaints and just general issues that this city has had with group and personal care homes. They caused us to do a little bit of a deep dive into our code and how we currently regulate them. Based off of your recommendation, we are proceeding with trying to come up with a new framework for regulating the group and personal care homes. I want to start by going over what our current framework is. I believe we can really separate it into three parts, one being definitions, two being the zoning use and what we have in our zoning chart, and then the conditions that we apply. We went over those all the last time, but I want to kind of draw your attention to what we found some of the larger issues to be. First, with regard to definitions, I've listed there boarding home, care home, group home for disabled persons, personal care home, and transitional housing facility. There are approximately six more designations, including hospice, nursing home, assisted living homes, that actually do also have overlap with some of those other definitions, the other categories of uses. Not all of those are actually mentioned in our zoning use chart. Instead, we have two designations, both applying to personal care, group, and boarding homes, which are referred to collectively together, almost as if they were the same use, despite not being the same use, which is a problem we're going to talk about. And we separate them between being equal to or less than five persons, or greater than or equal to six persons. One of the problems we discussed the last time is that while Section 503E does provide conditions to that use, that it kind of further allows us to regulate, it's only applying to the designations that are greater than or equal to six people. Those included obtaining the state licenses for operation, registration with Department of Community Development, meeting building and fire regs, and obtaining an O T C, as well as meeting parking standards. The issue is that we have no mechanism, because these are permitted by right pretty much everywhere within the city, to have these people come in to assess whether or not they are actually meeting those conditions until after we already have a complaint. So because there are three mechanisms we have under the current framework for regulating, there are three problems. The first being the definitions. As I mentioned, there is inconsistency and overlap, and some of those are not mentioned in our use chart at all, which further complicates where they fit in to what our current plan is. So one example is personal care homes versus care home. This one for me, I still struggle to understand how a care home is different from a nursing home. So I've underlined the main points for you to look at here. A care home is considered a rest home or nursing home, which provides lodging and/or meals and/or domiciliary care for aged, informed, chronically ill or convalescent persons. That's not mentioned in our use chart. So presumably, we could potentially put it under nursing home, but that's making, staff would have to start making assumptions that it makes it difficult to objectively and consistently determine where these can go and what conditions they're going to be under. Personal care home is defined as a residential use facility within a single-family dwelling. They provide personal service, protective care, and oversight of ambulatory non-related persons, and these are persons who do not have injuries or disabilities which require chronic or convalescent care, including medical, nursing, or intermediary care. The concerning part for me is that personal services in our code is defined to include assistance or supervision with nutrition, medication, or transient medical care, which seems to run afoul partly of our personal care home definition. We do clarify that it does not include old age residences devoted to independent living, so that would be like your assisted living facilities, potentially falling under sort of a subversion of the care home, or boarding facilities that do not provide personal care or group homes for disabled persons. So we're creating a lot of different delineations, but I'm not sure I can tell you what any of them truly mean. There is also overlap with personal care home and assisted living, as well as boarding homes and transitional housing facilities when you actually start to look at definitions. Our second problem is that there's no mechanism for assessment of the required conditions. So as I mentioned, 503E does provide conditions for personal care, group homes, and boarding homes of greater than or equal to six people. One is that it requires a state license. Well, boarding homes do not require a state license. The state definitions explicitly exclude boarding homes. So they may be subject to some regulation, but it's not the same as personal care and group homes, and yet we are lumping those together. We also have no mechanism for checking that compliance. We have nothing that gets them in the door. So we have it in our code, but really, it takes me getting a complaint or some allegation of abuse, and at that point, we have to scramble at staff to go get an administrative search warrant, or for the police department to go get a criminal search warrant in cases of abuse, in order to determine whether or not this facility is even legally operating. Whereas, we could potentially, what we are proposing is create a mechanism that would force them to come into the door and say, show us what you have, and that will, we will give you approval for that use. There's also a requirement for compliance with Building and Fire Code, but we are facing the same issues. It is only after we have a complaint that we are able to get into the door to assess whether or not these people are living in safe conditions, and whether or not they are complying with the Fire Code, which in the majority of these cases would require that facility to be sprinkled, especially because we are, we're talking about non-ambulatory people. And the third problem is that there are no conditions for personal care, group, or boarding homes for less than six people. So the state licensing is still required whether you have greater than or equal to six people. I believe that the state's code, their definitions say it's two or more people if you are providing certain services and you're talking about non-related persons. So it's an arbitrary kind of regulation that we have placed that it means nothing for actually protecting these people. It leaves us really with only Building and Fire Code violations to deal with the facilities that have greater, that have less than or equal to five people, or reliance on state involvement. We have already faced that within the last year. It is slow, and it does not enable us to deal with an emergency situation where people are being harmed by what is supposed to be their caregivers. So I want to emphasize that the goal of these amendments is to create a more consistent framework. We are not trying to prevent or even limit the existence of personal care, group homes, group homes for the disabled, or boarding homes within the city of Griffin. We are wanting to assure that we have safe and humane operation of those types of facilities within the city. We also want to ensure that the zoning restrictions are reasonable and that we remain in compliance with the Fair Housing Act. But we also need to find a way to protect the city's legitimate interest in minimizing congestion in our single-family use areas, and also to enforce adequate life and safety code to ensure that these people are living in the conditions that are humane and that are safe, and that we would enforce consistently with any other business that would operate within the city. So with that being said, I'm going to hand it over to Chad to talk about our current proposed change.
All right, and again, to reiterate, the whole goal of this is safety all the way around. So and that's kind of where these proposed changes are kind of coming into play. So as we discussed last time when we met with y'all, basically, care homes are permitted within the U D C all the way across the board as a permitted use. So what we're recommending to bring to you guys in the form of a ordinance amendment would be to allow these, that's a special use permit, still within all the single-family residential districts, and also too, within the both the H D R A and H D R B and P R D districts. And we would leave them alone in the P I D, institutional and neighborhood business and P C D as permitted, since those are more of your commercial type areas. What we're proposing in terms of actual language is to tie this to square footage, the number of occupants, and tie the square footage of the dwelling. So to kind of go through this, again, minimum house size, no more than four residents in a 1,500-heated square foot house, six in a 2,000, no more than eight in a 2,500-heated square foot. Again, kind of point out what we do define in this a resident as each care home client, caregiver, and other adult or child that is domiciled in the dwelling. Sometimes you may have somebody that's running one of these, now maybe it's you and your husband, you have a child in there. So again, the idea of this, that you're not jamming a lot of folks into a small space.
Plus that, two, plus the kids, and then five in the works.
Totally true. Again, this is all about safety of the residents. Compliance with ADA, compliance with all requirements and regulations of Department of Community of Health and Human Services. That's obviously through the state, then you got to show us documentation of that. Certificate of Inspection obtained by both the Fire Marshal and Building Inspector. The Fire Marshal is key here for some fire codes, depending on the number of people that are involved. And that's one of the first things that we tell folks even now when they come to ask us about care homes.
There needs to be regulation of the bedroom square footage.
Next one, occupancy requirement. No more than two residents may occupy a single bedroom. So there you go.
But there's the square footage.
Oh, well, yeah, that's tied to the state.
So there's the state's square footage where you had to have a certain square footage for one.
I believe, so I have to double check on that.
There's an option I want to add into that.
I need to double check on that, but I think that's regulated to the state. And then obviously, issuance of occupational tax certificate by us. So again, and that would be for disabled and personal care homes. And then essentially taking the same recommendations and applying with the boarding homes and group homes as well. Again, the idea here is that we're treating these the same kind of across the board, so that you're not kind of pulling one of these out and treating them any different. So again, the next area of focus, it's primarily the definition. That's going to be the big hangup. I think we're pretty close with respect to the criteria that we're giving you guys as it relates to a special use permit. The key on this, as Kelsey went over, is the definition. So that's kind of where we got to dive in and get a little bit more deeper. We, where possible, we want to kind of stay kind of with what the state is defining these as closely as possible, but there are some of those instances, as Kelsey kind of indicated, like the just care home, it gets a little dicey, and we got to kind of figure that out. Any questions?
When, is this, this is on the agenda?
No, sir, no. So we just wanted to kind of present this to y'all and kind of get a feel if we're in the right path, kind of going down the right path for what y'all are thinking, and getting any input and feedback from y'all before we actually draft something.
Before we do a full ordinance kind of proposal to vote before you all to vote, really, where our hangup is, is this definitions like Chad just mentioned. We're going to have to decrease some of the clutter, and we want to make sure that we're not creating a problem by trying to fix this one. So that is going to require a larger deep dive. I would like to assess a couple of other different locations, other cities, as well as the state definitions, but I'm hoping to decrease rather than having 11 different definitions when we only really have three that are even referenced within our use chart or in our code, to kind of decrease that clutter and make sure that we're eliminating that overlap. So our main, the main point of this presentation was just to show you what we are proposing with regard to location, the special use, and the conditions. And it may seem odd to have us where I said, we're treating personal care, group homes, and group homes for the disabled all the same on our current chart. We would still be treating them the same here, but we would, rather than have the boarding homes listed and saying, you have to get state license from the Department of Community Health, a boarding home is not going to have to get that type of state license. So we are broadening it and saying, whatever state license you are required to get, whether it be from the Health Department or DHS, DHS is requiring it, for example, with a foster care facility that is not a foster home, but a group home, those are regulated very differently. We currently don't make any distinction. So we also want to make sure that we're dealing, we're dealing with those, as well as rehabilitation centers and transient living facilities. And this is the first step in doing that. It is likely the first iteration of what needs to be a larger change to the U D C. But right now, our proposal and kind of the main thing we wanted feedback from you on is our zoning use, as well as the current limitations that we have put into the conditions for the special use permit.
And you probably have an estimate of what's out there already. So do we need to have a town hall meeting with those or individual meetings where how we're going to put them into the, identify them based on what their use is so that we don't get hit with a bunch of phone calls after fact?
Well, we've got an estimate of those that are registered through the state and obviously the those that do have O T Cs with us. There's no telling how many that are out there that we don't know. So this is also giving us a little bit more teeth to kind of, wanting to find out and kind of pull them in with the portion of cost laws.
Yeah, I do want to emphasize, this is not a cure-all for the problem that the city has. This is a step towards really eradicating a further deterioration of this system.
It's going to take a time. So if anyone wants to, as the word kind of gets out, because you know, right now, it's when, you know, some of our surrounding communities where they get phone calls about, you know, what's your regulations for care homes, and more often than not, they're usually a special use permit or a special exception. And then they find out, well, you know, city of Griffin, you know, it's a permitted use, so.
They don't, they don't ever have a reason to, and are the worst.
I think we need to make it clear to the commission that, well, first off, state for years now has tried to regulate these various types of care homes. They've done a pretty pathetic job with it as such, and it often winds back up with the local government when there is a problem. But on the other hand, are we preemptive from regulating in an area, or at least trying to enforce even state standards at a local level?
From the current statutes and case law that I've looked at, we are, we have a legitimate interest. The case law has says that we have, we have a legitimate interest specifically in preventing that congestion, and it elevates itself when we go to life safety standards. So that's why I want to make sure that we're applying the same standards, not just to group homes for disabled, but group homes or boarding homes elsewhere, so that we're focusing on that concentrated living.
Special use permit is a zoning mechanism. It gives you a one-time look at the situation, and you approve it and it goes into effect.
A one-time look, and also provided that, this one.
Kind of follow-up D U C will be required to enforce this.
I would not be, so this is the mechanism for getting them in the door to allow us to assess it from the front end. I do not think this is a cure-all. And in fact, for the ones that aren't new, that are already in existence, I'm anticipating that staff is going to have to do what we do right now, which is refer to an administrative search warrant or to a criminal search warrant in the cases where it's necessary. Now, the big change here is going to be that if they are in violation, it is much easier for me to go and get a court order to shut that facility down and say, you were out, you were operating outside of your zoning use, and we can do that through municipal court. Then right now, I have to go through a whole nuisance process to prove that they are not in compliance with Fire and Building Code. So I cannot currently shut them down, and plus, I go through a process that can take upwards of 60 days.
And even when we're getting inquiries, and when folks are calling or kind of coming to the counter like, hey, you know, think about operating a care home, kind of what's your process? I think having these start out as a special use too, it's, they're going to be more inclined to kind of come back in and do what we're requiring to do. And when they hear, you know, oftentimes that it's a permitted use by right, you may not ever see them again, and then boom, they're off.
Now, I agree, you're educating somewhat through that process.
So it's a little bit, kind of through this, like Kelsey said, it's going to take some time, and the word will kind of start to kind of get out. Again, the whole idea of this is not to limit or prohibit them, it's to actually allow them in a safe format.
And from my perspective, as far as from, you know, a code prosecution standpoint and doing the nuisance, I would much rather request that we get a hearing before the judge to shut a facility down that is operating unsafe through zoning, than have to go through the nuisance process and have the delay that would follow from that. And because really, in that situation, my only opportunity is rehab or demo, I still cannot shut them down. I have no mechanism for doing that. The state can do it, but we would have to rely on them to The state can do it, but we would have to rely on them to come in and say, yeah, these people don't have a state license, and there, there's delays involved in that as well. So this would give us the ability to have more teeth, uh, for, for the ones that are operating improperly, but also educate and ensure that the ones that are opening anew are doing so safely and correctly and in compliance with the state law that is already there.
What if they have an occupational tax certificate, then Captain Thompson's going to have them on a list to make sure that they're compliant with any codes that he has, right? Is it not yearly?
I think commercial is yearly, I don't know if residential is yearly.
If they have an OTC, is that not a commercial use, residential?
Well, that's funny, you, you mentioned that, because that's a conversation that we were having yesterday as it relates to these, uh, and trying to make sure that we're not running a file of fair housing and things of nature, but while you kind of throw in a, a little bit of a curveball, being that these are kind of commercial use in a residential setting, so, uh, trying to balance it too. So I mean, you raise a very valid point of that we're already kind of bouncing that back and forth.
And we would really need to speak with them about the fire code and sort of what the limitations are, because I do know that, you, despite you having an OTC, you can have a home occupation OTC, and in many ways, these, some of these end up looking like home occupation, um, especially if the, if the person who's running the facility lives at that location. Um, so tho- those are all things that we're going to have to dive into with regard to the definitions as well, to try to narrow, uh, narrow kind of how this is going to function.
Majority going on apartment complexes and telling landlords that grills are too close to the property, so I mean, it's a life safety type of justification. Any other questions? Excellent. Thank you. And final thing for the day is to discuss revisions to the main, main City of Griffin organizational chart, City Manager Justin Cotton will address.
Good morning. This is also on the agenda for tonight, this is probably a, um, one of many changes that will come, but for tonight's purposes, I'm asking you to approve a change in the organizational chart that actually disposes of the Department of Administrative Services, if you'll remember that had, um, the way it was listed in the current work chart as accounting, HR, and IT. Um, what we realized in the process of the last few months is that accounting is very specific to what happens after a budget is adopted, and does not really account for budgeting and procurement or purchasing, so we are delineating that within the Finance Department, um, which will be a new department with accounting, budget, and procurement. We are, I'm asking for this change now because we would like to go ahead and get a Finance Director hired, um, to replace the Administrative Services position. That would also then break out human resources and information technology, where we are specifying information technology as those systems and support for our internal operations, but then also telecommunications as an enterprise fund. HR, of course, um, is compromised of benefits, payroll, and risk management, that's not really changing, it's just becoming its own department. So operationally, there's really not much change in who needs to report to whom, as, um, both Mr. Cotton and Ms. Woods have always come to me, anyway, um, by charter, human resources is managed through the City Manager's Office, so the only thing this is really doing is just sort of making that more official. The other change, um, that we are asking for at this point is that the Municipal Court Administrator would report to our Staff Attorney, Ms. Carden, she is in court now prosecuting our credit enforcement cases, um, and has more day-to-day operational knowledge of what they are doing than I do at this point, um, so I've asked if she would take the reins on Municipal Court and allow Ms. Brock to report to her for day-to-day, um, situations as well, so that adoption would take place tonight. Um, there are some other things that we are looking at, both Ms. Woods and I, in regards to some things that need to be updated. Um, either we have hired maybe a Class A instead of a Class B equipment operator, or we're trying to figure out some succession planning throughout departments, but we're not quite ready to present those yet, we want to do so in our annual goals workshop, so you will see this come back to you in January, but in order to get that Finance Director hired, we'd like to go ahead and make this change tonight. Are there any questions with that?
Good job. All right, we'll see you all this evening at six o'clock. All right. Great for today.
All right.
A good trip.
I'll see you tonight, right?
Yep.